I call the meeting to order. Uh, first item is to approve the agenda, approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, new business. Yeah, well, that's good. Happy to have citizens, perfect. All right, new business. The Preserve rezoning and preliminary plat, public hearing, Aaron.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Tonight we will be reviewing the Preserve, preliminary plat, and rezoning. I'll walk you through the presentation, give you the information about what we're reviewing, give you some details, and then we'll hold a public hearing, should members of the public like to provide any comment. If so, we ask that you join us up at the table here, give us your name, address, and let us know your thoughts. So tonight we, uh, have the public hearing, and then the recommendation to the City Council will be on preliminary plat and rezoning. So two separate things that we'll work through together. So some fast facts about the Preserve. The builder for the project is Brandal Anderson, which is new to the community, not someone who's building in Carver right now. There are sixty-six total single-family units, and there are a couple important pieces that I'm going to mention throughout the presentation. One is that extension of Monroe Drive that we talked a lot about with Timber Creek, but also is important for the Preserve. And then something that I know is important both to this group and the City Council is usually the sidewalk and trail system in a project. So where we are in the process, uh, sometimes can feel like things are moving lightning pace, or they can feel like they move a little bit slow. This one has felt like it's clipped along pretty good. So for this project, we're through the concept plan, which we reviewed when it was just an idea. We're through annexation, which the Planning Commission doesn't review, just the City Council. Approval by the state has been completed, so the property is fully in city limits. This project, as you know, is in the packet, required a noise study. I'll talk a little bit about that. And tonight we're at preliminary plat. So what that means is, we start to get to the point where we know how the neighborhood is going to lay out. We know all of the details about it. We can talk about it at this point. So an idea of where we're located, directly east of this project is the D.R. Horton Project, Meridian Fields. We're directly south of Highway two twelve, just north of the new Timber Creek property. Um, Monroe Drive, which is the street that you drive on to get to Quick Trip, is the main collector that leads you into this site. So development details, uh, there's been a couple questions from residents. I'll talk through those at the end of the presentation, but one of the big things to think about with this project is that this site does not have direct access to Highway two twelve. Right now, there is a front-end road with one access there for some township residents. This project does not allow for these new sixty-six residents, or residents of the D.R. Horton Project or Timber Creek, to access Highway two twelve from this spot. It's not safe, uh, with a new Highway two twelve project being four-lane in that area. It would be really tricky to get traffic in and out. So all traffic will come through Carver Street. So Monroe Drive is the big one, obviously. And then there's a street coming in from, uh, Meridian Fields, so Fields Drive connects in. And then there's two access points on Monroe. So there's a trail system in this project. We talked about that quite a bit at concept. You'll see the yellowish-orange line in here is the trail system around the wetland. That, so there is that component, but there's no park. So no park directly in this development, so we'll be collecting park dedication at a, at a cash-per-unit price of four thousand seventy dollars, which is based off the Park's master plan. So all of these things we work on together, come together at preliminary plat. Something to note about the properties along the wetland, and something we talk about pretty often as a city staff, is there will be conservation signage at every lot corner. We see, um, a lot of new people moving in, and they can slowly start to creep into our conservation easements. So we've been trying to be a bit more proactive with that signage. So signage will go in at every lot corner surrounding the wetland, just to let people know what the area is, what they should and should not be doing. Something else to note about this one that we'll talk about is that there's two exception pieces. So both in the northeast and the northwest corner. So those two properties right now are township residents, and they will continue to stay. So one is here, and then one is here. I'll talk a bit about what we think will happen to both of those as projects continue to develop. So those two properties will continue to stay. At the time of development, they both decided not to move forward with this development, said, "I want to stay where I am right now." Those two properties, not annexed into city limits, so they continue to be township residents. We'll talk a bit in detail about the noise study coming up next. So the last time that this group looked at a noise study was for the property directly east, which is Meridian Fields, the D.R. Horton Project. So a noise study is required for projects adjacent to major highways. We know that Highway two twelve is busy. We know that it's loud. We know it's going to impact residents that abut it directly. So for the noise study, uh, field data was collected. So they come out, and they set up receptors on the site to gauge the, uh, level of sound. They had a receptor at two hundred feet and four hundred and fifty feet from Highway two twelve, so two different measurements. One, two hundred feet from two twelve, one from four fifty, different readings, obviously because of just different distances. The location at two hundred feet from Highway two twelve exceeded the noise limits that are acceptable from the MPCA, or the Pollution Control Agency. The locations four hundred and fifty feet from two twelve did not. So there are only a handful of homes that are directly impacted by that sound that requires some additional mitigation. So it's the five lots that I have circled, so the five lots closest to two twelve, obviously, require the mitigation. So what does that look like? As part of the noise study, the recommendation was to have a five-foot berm with landscaping, which is included in the project right now. So there will be a berm in this area. Something else that's always suggested is climate-controlled homes. So living in Minnesota, heat is always a given, but for these five, air conditioning will also be required. So they are able to close their home should it be loud. And then building materials need to meet the standard.
Five or six?
Five.
Yeah, six, circle.
Sorry, it's five. And then building materials, so, uh, building materials today generally are able to meet the requirement of noise. Um, just some, like, starter windows sometimes break it, but, uh, building materials will be required in these five. So the berm with landscaping, climate-controlled homes, and then building materials will be able to mitigate the sound that exceeded the allowable decibels. Okay, so that's the noise study. Moving into the preliminary plat. So again, the plat is the pretty technical document. It lays out all the lots, it lays out easements, and it lays out outlots. Those are usually the big things that we look for. So you'll see on these, you'll continue to see the exception pieces in both corners. So no lots are slated in those areas. I'm going to talk a little bit about a ghost plat on the next slide, but this is the general layout. It shows the city outlots, which are Outlet A, which will have a pond, Outlet B, which is a large wetland, and then D and E, which are largely remnant pieces that can't be used for much. But the city is usually the most proactive with maintenance. So a developer can sometimes hang on to those small outlots, but it gets really tricky to keep them maintained, keep them, uh, up to the level that people typically like to see. So it's generally easier, just if the city assumes that responsibility, to make sure that we have eyes on it every day, and we keep it mowed, and it can, in condition that is conducive to the neighbors. So the preliminary plat is split here between the next two pages, so the north portion of the project. And you'll see in the north portion, with this exception piece, you'll see that there are three lots grade in that area. So what we call that is a, it's a ghost plat. So what that means is when the property owner in that location chooses to no longer live there, or should someone choose to sell to a developer, we know that three lots are anticipated to be there. At that point, we can plan our sewer and water connections to be there when they choose to come in. So it's our way of saying, yes, we know that you're there today. We're not going to do anything to change that. But when you do choose to come in, we've thought about it. We have the utilities for you in that location. South portion of the plat. And then we'll talk a little bit about the zoning details. So again, the property is sixty-six single-family homes. We talk a lot here about the density that's required. This property is a little bit interesting because of that large wetlands, that that area is not buildable, so we don't need to use that in the density calculation. So the density of this project is generally higher than we see at four-point-three-nine. What we need to hit for the Met Council is three. Um, Timber Creek hit right at three, so this complements it well at four-point-three-nine. It would be a nice balance if one of our projects did not hit three this year, but thankfully both did, so we don't need to do any balancing across the city. What R2 means is that at seven thousand square foot lots, they are sixty feet wide. Front yard setback is twenty-five feet, sides are seven-point-five. Uh, if you're on a corner, it's fifteen feet from the street, and rear is twenty feet. Uh, if you'll recall, most projects in Carver today do hit that R2 zoning. So recent examples are Meridian Fields, Oak Tree, Timber Creek, Copper Hills, all have R2 for their base zoning. So largely, this project will look similar to the projects that are surrounding it. Tree removal, and then, uh, landscaping is always something that I like to bring up. So again, this property is a little bit unique, where there weren't a ton of trees on the property. So you'll see the red here are trees that are going to be removed. In total, one hundred and fifteen trees are removed. Largely, areas of the wetland are preserved because it will be held in city outlet. And then the landscape plan offers three hundred and thirty-two trees that will be added. So you see the pretty robust berm with landscaping on those five homes adjacent to two twelve, with some, uh, really significant buffering along this property as well for the exception piece. From there, each property will get a boulevard tree, which is pretty typical. Residents are always welcome to plant additional trees should they choose, but day one, they'll get the boulevard tree. And then the stretch of Monroe that hits this property will have similar, similar boulevard plantings to what is there today. So we know Monroe Drive to be that collector, to have a little bit of a boulevard feel. We'll continue with the boulevard trees throughout that project. I'm going to backtrack a little bit, because I forgot something I want to mention. So I talked about this ghost plat property and how we think it's going to come in for three additional lots. The property, the exception piece on the other side, we, uh, thought about pretty extensively as a staff, just thinking about how that one could connect potentially. And to have Tammerack Road jog up there to hit that property was really tricky. So it's our belief and intention that, should the stars align, and the next property west develops, and this property owner chooses to go at the same time, there potentially could be a cul-de-sac coming from the west property into that area. We didn't think it was feasible to access this entire space with a ghost plat in the project today. So future, might happen, might not. We're just starting to be forward with our thinking about it, so we can cover the bases. So notification of this meeting was required, since there's a public hearing. A letter was sent to all property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the property boundary. So any property line within three hundred and fifty feet of that. So it's not from the center of the property, it's from all property lines. Notice was additionally run in the Chesapeake Herald ten days prior to the public hearing. Again, a requirement, just to let people know about the public hearing. Some examples of the Brandal Anderson product that we'll be anticipating in the project. Uh, to be super frank, it looks pretty similar to what's being built in Carver today. Traditional two-stores with a three-story garage. So next steps tonight is to hold the public hearing, take public comment, discuss as a group, ask any questions. Aaron Schmidt is here with the engineering team, should you have any specific questions for him. And then again, we're looking for a recommendation to the City Council on both rezoning and preliminary plat. Jason Palmby is here with the development team, too. Do you mind coming up and introducing yourself quick? Tell us who you are, what you're doing.
Jason Palmby, um, uh, working with Brandal Anderson Homes. And, um, uh, I can't help but throw some comments to Aaron and Aaron. They do such a thorough and
Thanks.
Very, well, I sincerely mean it. They, they're very thorough with their presentation. And, um, the only thing that I would add is, um, there's oftentimes I get comments on price point. And we'll probably start in the, in the low four-fifties, and it'll probably end up in the six, four-fifty to six-hundred, somewhere in that range. And there's been a lot, you've probably read in the media and the news, there's a lot of import costs that have, there's a lot of import costs that, that go into these house, these, um, these homes today. And, um, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at right now. And, um, uh, if, if you have any questions for me, by all means.
Should we move forward with the public hearing?
Yeah, let's do the public hearing.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks, Jason.
Questions after. All right, um. We will now open the public hearing. Those wishing to address the Planning Commission should come forward, say their name and address for the record. All comments, after all comments are received, the public hearing will, will be closed. Note for their comments on this issue will be received at the meeting after that time. It looks like we have at least two or three people.
Sure.
Someone like to go first?
Yeah. Gary Etheridge and my wife, Deborah, uh, fifty-two eighty, Highway two twelve, in Chaska. We live right across from that, that area there. Uh, so my, my question would be in regard, is, so it, it sounds like all the traffic that is going to go back on to eventually pour out into Highway eleven, correct?
Yes.
So the sixty-six will go out into Hi- Highway eleven. Then, on the west side of your drawing.
Aaron, do you want to bring the?
Okay.
Is that fine?
Yeah, so.
There you go.
Okay, the, the, the area there, just west of Area C, that's existing hammer place right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, a- and you're saying that there'd be three, there'd be three lots go in there potentially with a cul-de-sac, and those would empty out onto that service road where the, where the, the Lenzins use right now, or the people from the other?
Sure.
Okay.
So this property here, this is where we have those three lots.
Right.
This is, uh, the Rasmussen piece.
Okay.
So once that one develops, we think it will be three. This property, the existing hammers piece, that will stay. In the future, when Lenzin chooses to develop, we think that it will be more conducive to development if there's potentially a cul-de-sac here.
Okay.
The frontage road will likely cease to exist by that point. Just knowing that two-twelve project, no access to two-twelve is expected with any of these projects.
But, I mean, you, you got to keep that access open right now.
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
But you're saying that at, at a point where they, they would put those three, three units in there on the cul-de-sac, that you expect at that point in time that that's, that access road's going to be closed?
Correct.
And where do you expect that the, that, uh, from Lenzins there, where do you expect that's going to pour out?
Um, into Carver city limits. They won't be able to access two-twelve from there.
So that road that you have down there on the very south part of that picture will be extended out, and that, that will be their access out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that's, that's the collector, right? So that's a larger, uh, larger s- street, right, designed for more traffic? I don't know, do we remember off the top of our head how many cars we, we anticipated? Uh, I know when we
A lot of cars.
Yeah.
We see a good deal of cars.
Okay. Sure.
So, no, we don't anticipate any projects moving west in Carver to be able to have direct access to Highway two twelve. Everything will come south on the Carver streets.
Okay. And, and it'll all go in, and they'll all be through that one road with the stoplight that's there at Quick Trip right now?
So
All that traffic will pouring out that way?
We suspect that there will be other connections. We won't rely just on Monroe. Lenzin is a really big piece of property, as you know. So there's going to be several streets that we anticipate will connect into our system. We typically don't like to rely on only one access point. So once Lenzin comes in, we'll try to figure out several access points for the property.
Yeah.
Right now with, I was just going to say, right now with the, the work, work construction that's been going on with the road, it's been very, very busy with the traffic. And with all the cones, we've been trying to maneuver out onto Highway two twelve.
Mm-hmm.
And so I imagine that this is going to be causing a little bit more traffic. And some of the cars, some of the trucks, the workers are parking in that area, the service road down where our driveway is.
Sure.
And so it's been rather tricky trying to get out into, uh, the, the highway. So the access, you know, it, it's been, it's been kind of hectic lately. And sometimes we've been blocked with trucks and electric, you know, things going in and out of the, the, uh, area there, but
Something that will help, the property directly south of this is called Timber Creek, the Song Farm, which I'm sure you're familiar with, too. As part of Phase One, which the city just approved, Monroe Drive needs to extend to this property. So as construction starts on that project, Monroe will reach this property. So I anticipate a lot of traffic going into this project will pretty quickly get off of two-twelve and eleven and take Monroe in. But sorry, it's been a pain. It's been a rough construction season, so thanks for your patience.
Yeah, it is. I just, I guess for the record, we just wanted to say that it has been very busy. Yeah, with just this, so. This looks like it's going to be kind of crazy, too, but anyway.
So I don't know the name, I don't know the name of the people, but Don Forners will own the farm there. Are, are they, they're still going to have access out through that, that, that road, correct?
They will, yes. We're working with the Township and the County right now on the two-twelve project to come up with a solution, knowing that frontage road will go away at some point, but we don't want to do it prematurely, which would cause them some trouble getting in and out of their property.
Is there any plans for the frontage road on our side and the north side of two-twelve?
Not today, that I know of. Um, since you're using it for access, I don't anticipate that to change, especially since you don't have another option. If there was another street that you could potentially use, like if Levi Griffin extended far enough, I would say we might work with you to try to figure that out, but there's no other great option for you, so I suspect you'll continue to use that frontage.
There, there is the end of that frontage road that we had heard was going to connect with the east side of Fleet Farm. You know, it was kind of going to be, it's a, it goes our driveway, and then you'd go further east, and then there, it stops right there, and we had heard that somehow, well, that's a way we could have gotten out, too. But, um, right now, we're just one, one area.
Right.
And, uh, you know, and we've been moving around the cones that have been set out there, and it's, uh, it's a little bit, it's been complicated. Every time, I just tell them, "Be careful."
Yeah.
"Watch where you're going on that, that road, because it's a little tricky." Yeah, and the traffic has just been increasing. For the record.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Um, do we have any information, Aaron, on the construction schedule for Monroe? Right, we've approved the, uh, the existing, so have they, they sort of do bidding or whatever they have to do?
So they, uh, Timber Creek has a grading permit right now, so they started work there. So work has commenced on the project.
Okay, so, so we anticipate by the time that this, right, we're still at the preliminary, we're final, maybe in a couple more months, that that road will definitely be under construction or completed before they start?
Yes, I would say completed might be a little bit tricky, but I would say good enough that construction workers could use it to get out to the site.
Excellent, okay, good. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think I've got any more.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm just listening while changing.
No problem. Um, maybe give another minute or two if anyone runs in late for the exciting hearing.
I'd say you're okay to close.
I think so, okay. All right, um. Uh, I will now close the public hearing. Does any commission member like to?
Motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second? All right, uh, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, now I took the public hearing closed. All right, um, do you want us to do commissioner comments on?
All of them.
On the rest of the, okay, so, yeah, so if anyone wants to go first, I have questions, but I'm happy to let anyone else go first.
I have two questions.
Sure, go ahead, Krista.
Um, do you have a picture of everything that's coming off Jonathan Carver Parkway off Monroe? Like, how many developments will there be?
A lot.
Like, is there a graphic of it, kind of visual?
Um, probably nothing that would make a ton of sense. Do you want to speak to it?
Are you speaking in the ultimate condition when, at full build-out?
Well, because this is the last development that is coming for any plat design.
Yeah.
So what is the stages of developments, and how many houses will be on Monroe Drive?
Hmm, sure. Um, well, just for some perspective, so, um, the comprehensive plan identified this Monroe Drive as the main collector road that's on the south side of Highway two twelve. So we anticipate that that road will go all the way out to County Road forty-three someday. So just for some perspective of the size of, of this road, it'll serve a very important per- purchase, or, uh, purpose, excuse me. So today we have, obviously, um, Quick Trips on it. There's a commercial development that's still remaining within that, um, southwest quadrant of, of two-twelve and Jonathan Carver Parkway, um, Meridian Fields, um, which is, I don't remember how many units that is off the top of my head. Eighty-one. Um, Timber Creek has about three
Three hundred.
Yeah, three forty-eight, and then this has sixty-six, so that's what it'll be, what it'll be serving.
Okay.
Yep.
So when we, um, started planning for Monroe, we take the entire area and how we think it will develop. So the road is constructed to handle the amount of traffic we're anticipating. Um, I would say, just a really rough ballpark from eleven to forty-three, I would say we're about a third of the way there right now. So we have a lot more development. Largely, it's single-family, um, residential, so the least traffic user. But as it gets closer to forty-three, it does move into more mixed-use housing, higher density and commercial. So we anticipate some higher users closer to that intersection. But for the stretch here, it's single-family, which, again, is typically a pretty low traffic.
And then on Monroe, there's all those boulevard trees?
Mm-hmm.
Who maintains those?
The city.
Those are all my questions.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I do.
Okay.
What is a filtration basin?
So a filtration basin, it's part of the pond system where, um, it gets a little bit tricky. It often looks dry, but it's serving a purpose to filter into the pond. So it's part of the system that allows water to slowly seep into the pond instead of going straight in. Largely looks dry a majority of the time, but is part of the pond system.
Is that pond system going to feed into the, uh, large existing wetland at all?
Yes, that pond system will drain into that wetland ultimately.
Sorry, we're talking about the pond that's adjacent to Highway two twelve, so
Yep.
Under Area C here, into the wetland.
So the filtration basin is used, um, in order to meet water quality standards, um, that are in place. You know, as, as development occurs, you need to meet certain standards for removing so much, um, you know, phosphorus, suspended solids, so that's, that's what its main purpose is.
Are we allowed to use phosphorus?
Well, yeah, you, you can't remove it all, but you, you can't release, you know, just unlimited supplies of it downstream, because it has negative impacts to the environment. So there's rules in place for how much you can just send downstream, so.
Phil?
I had an opportunity to drive around the whole area, perspective of it. And, um, obviously, it wasn't accessing here, but the properties, uh, to the east. And I sat there for a while, and this is dealing with, uh, the, uh, noise mitigation. Uh, I came, I went there a couple times, went around noon, and it was quite noisy. And one, I think it was about five, and it was even noisier. Uh, the question is, uh, as we're building here, uh, and Highway two twelve is going to be double expanded, is the recommendations here really si- significant enough, sufficient enough to deal with the expansion of two-twelve? Or is it going to need more of a, what you see along many of the highways?
Right.
The border walls?
That's a really good point. I would say we can only do a noise study for what's existing today. We can't project what it might be in the future. So the noise study that was done considers noise today. Um, in the future, might we require something else? We might, yes. I don't think we'll get to the point of like a noise barrier, like a, a fence in this area that the city would work towards. But I would say, that's a good point, with increased traffic on Highway two twelve, there could come a time that additional landscaping or birmingham might need to be added.
Who pays for that?
So typically, if it's after a project is done, it would be the city or the county if they're working on that project. So at this point, the berm and the landscaping meets what's required. Um, I suspect that, yes, Highway two twelve will likely be busy, but I am a little bit curious if traffic moving more efficiently might make it a quieter spot, maybe? Just with the amount of traffic that's slowing down in that area, the amount of backup that can happen there, too. I would like to believe that maybe the four-lane can move traffic more efficiently, so it's less noisy. But, a good point.
Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll go.
Why do you keep looking at me?
Oh, no, it's okay.
I'll raise my hand.
No. Um, so I, I actually had some questions about the, uh, the noise, noise barrier as well. Um, just from about two hundred feet, how, how long is a lot typically? Would that be, um, you know, because they, they said they did a two-hundred-foot and a four-hundred-foot, right? Just like lot number, um, lot number one, like what?
Uh, typically, they're between about a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty.
Oh, okay, okay. So just slightly past the, the whole house, right? So the whole house would have been inside that two-hundred-foot? Okay, that makes sense. And then on the, uh, the berm itself, so is that part of the property owner's maintenance, right? They, you know, it's a hill, they mow or whatever, and?
So, yes, it will be the responsibility of the property owner. Something that was important here, though, is that the berm and the trees in that area are in a drainage and utility easement. So the property owner can't go in there. I don't think anyone ever would, but they can't go in there and clearcut those trees just because it's an important approval of this project.
Okay.
You mean because they want to see the highway?
Right.
Beautiful highway.
Different strokes.
Okay. And then on the, uh, the wetland area, do we have any, uh, extra requirements from the Water Conservation District for, like, like runoff from the, the properties around the area? Or is there enough, you know, I don't know, buffer distance in terms of the wetland area itself?
Sure.
Do we need any mitigation from the
So this project is in, um, Carver County Water Management Organization area, the C C W M O. And they have an independent permitting process
Okay.
to make sure that every project can meet their requirements, which, to be honest, are usually a lot more stringent than ours. So
Okay, good.
It's helpful, they have their own process to make sure it checks all of their boxes too.
Oh, excellent. Okay, actually, that was it. A few this time. All right, any, any other comments from the commission? Okay, all right. No, that's good, we're good, moving through, like I said. Okay, um, I guess we need a motion for approval if we?
I will make a motion to recommend the approval of rezoning from A to R two and the preliminary plat for the preserve.
Great, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, none, motion carries. All right. Ah, communication. All right, uh, anyone comments or questions?
I have one exciting piece of news. Uh, we're expecting to open G C P N August twenty-seventh.
Oh, fantastic.
Which is only eight days from now, which is really exciting. So I've said it a couple of times here, but it's been a hard construction season, so thank you for your patience and landscaping won't be in right away, so it's just going to look like a typical street. But by the fall, it should look like a really beautiful corridor, so.
But traffic will be moving again.
Yes.
Which will be nice.
This is nice.
It's nice to have.
Every time I get in my car, it takes me a couple of minutes to figure out how to get where I'm going. So I'm excited just to have one way.
Um, I guess just, have we had any commercial, I mean, we've mostly had residential development.